I'm going to go ahead and call the January second, two thousand twenty-four reord meeting of the supervisors into session. And if I can, at this time, if Judge Hunter would come forward and swear in our new supervisor, Paul Richards, San Francisco, and then we'll also swear in our new, our re-elected auditor, Is that it?
Yes, honor and privilege to be here tonight to square in a new supervisor, Mr. Paul, San Francisco. You ready, sir?
I'm ready.
Okay, who's holding the Bible for you?
My daughter and I now.
Okay, please place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, Paul, Richard, San Francisco.
Aye, Paul, Richard, San Francisco.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of township supervisor.
I will discharge the duties of township supervisor.
For the township of Newtown.
The township of Newtown.
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm glad you picked him out.
Locking the long one down. You need this one before I know.
There we go, three, one, three.
Gerald, Gerald Warner.
Steven Gerald.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
Support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of elected auditor.
Yeah.
For the township of Newtown.
Township of Newtown.
Delaware County, Pennsylvania, with fidelity. So help me God. Congratulations.
Come on, Mr. Warner, you want to get in there, come on.
that after eighteen years on the bench, how many, twenty-five years of being a cop here, the last ten of those being the chief of police, you have just been elevated to senior status. So it's been a, it's been a remarkable career, a remarkable decades, multiple decades of service to the township. I, you know, your, your guys were nice to me when I was, when I was coming up here, they didn't, they could never catch me, I kept running too fast. Never got Steve either, he was just as fast, but you guys tried. Yeah. But congratulations on your decades of service, thank you for everything you've done for the township and, yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and do the roll call. Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Chanlis.
Here.
Ms. Roberts-Lightcap.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. San Francisco.
Here.
All right, and from there, it's up for you to appoint a temporary chair, do you want to do it through nominations?
I'll nominate Supervisor Chanlis.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Supervisor Chanlis, I will turn it over to you.
So now we're, I'm going to call for the appointment of a temporary secretary.
I nominate Mr. Neese.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed, the ayes have it. Now we'll take a moment of silence and then we'll start with the pledge.
Item eight, agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item twelve point one below?
Subtle.
Second.
Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed, the ayes have it. Now we'll move on to number nine, election of board officers. Do we have a nomination for the election of chair?
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Altieri.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, do we have to close nominations or do we just?
We just call them, I think.
All right, all those in favor of electing Leonard Altieri as chair?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Anyone? All right, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much. I'll now move into nine point two, election of a vice chair, I'd like to nominate Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap.
I'll second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis to nominate Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap as vice chair. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five to nothing. Okay, section ten, public comment for agenda items only, if there's any members of the public who have any questions or comments about an agenda item, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Yeah, Mr. Fogg.
I'm here for, I guess it's agenda item, is it twenty-two point two, for the eliminate R five uses from special use district? And I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're, you get an explanation of exactly why we're removing this, and I just want to make sure that all the restrictions that they have in R five, that we're not, you know, just eliminating, like, as far as building height, building length, units per acre, that, you know, from the special use, that someone could come in and get a conditional use, and not have to follow all the restrictions that are in R five. That's basically my, you know, concern with that.
And I know that there's a group from your neighborhood, so is, is that collectively kind of what everyone's question is? Because I don't normally do a question and answer back and forth session, but that's a pretty cut and dry question, I can turn it over to the solicitor, he can explain it. We're going to discuss it again in greater detail as the agenda item goes down, but as opposed to having you all sit here, if you don't want to, I can have the solicitor kind of tee up where we, how we got here, where we are, and what our next steps are, and we'll, we'll just do that now, Mr. Sikora.
So there's a, first of all, there's just a number of different ways that zoning amendments can happen, one of them is you can task the planning commissions to come up with some zoning amendments, text amendments, and present them to the board, you can hire a third-party consultant, sometimes contractors or developers come in and they suggest changes, and one of the ways is just the township administration can come up with a recommended text amendment. So when you start hearing the same comments from various supervisors over and over about the significant amount of residential development that we've had over the past five years, it's just, you know, there's, there's a certain point at which everybody feels, okay, we don't want to just completely change the town, and so this, there's different places in our town that are residential, single-family districts, we have apartment districts, we have continuing care, retirement community districts, we have R five, which is housing for the elderly districts. We also have another district called, there's, there's two districts at issue tonight, one that you're concerned about, but I might as well discuss them both together. We have a commercial district, right, right in the middle of town, where we have all our, you know, barber shops and bakeries and, and gas stations and everything else, that actually, our code allows residential uses by special exception, with really not too much qualification other than special exception, so it's not contrary to health, safety, welfare of the community. The other place that we have housing that's not in what you call a residential district is in these SU one, special use districts. Example is Campus Boulevard, there's, but there's a couple of them around, and I know you're familiar with one near you.
Yes.
Special use district, primarily designed for laboratory, office space, pretty much all of the uses that are allowed in those districts are by conditional use. Additional use is just like a special exception, instead of the zoning board grants a special exception, which means it's a permitted use with certain criteria, additional use, the board of supervisors does that same process like the zoning hearing board does, and, but it's a permitted use. So one of the ways to, to, to limit this growth of housing, where we, you know, that it's, I think people feel satisfied now that the township has housing for every socio-economic, you know, we didn't used to be that way, right, but we have housing for every socio-economic category, right, you have, you know, bazillionaires, all the way down to, you know, single-family, you know, single-bedroom apartments, and there's plenty of housing for everyone, and everyone in between. But one of the things you can do is just, under the SU one districts, one of the uses that's allowed by conditional use is any use allowed in the R five district, and like you said, it's got to comply with the R five district requirements, right? So if they're more strict, so to the extent that somebody wants to come in right now and say, we're applying for a conditional use application for housing for the elderly in a special use district, that's, they have an absolute right to do that, and, you know, other than having those hearings on, you know, the parameters on what the left and right limits are, as to what that means, they're entitled to it, right? And so the idea is, if you don't want to have the continued growth in population, start limiting the population to just popular areas where people are supposed to live, right? And so I don't know if the board wants to do this or not, this is really just being presented to the board for the first time tonight, but these are kind of consistent with comments that the different board members and really frankly, the public has made, and so the administration just said, okay, well, let's put something in front of the board, and they may, they may not want to do this at all, or they may want to change it, but the, the, the specific purpose of this word is, is to keep the special use district with the primary listed uses, not the additional use of R five uses. So it, so no, somebody can't come, if it's removed successfully, right, you got to go through the, the steps, you got to go through all the processes, it's got to be reviewed by the, the town planning commission, it's got to be reviewed by the county planning commission, it's got to be advertised for a hearing in two consecutive weeks, within a certain timeframe. If, if all those steps are taken, and the board decides to remove R five uses from the SU one district, somebody can't now come in and say, I want to do R five housing in an SU one district, they would have to do that by variance, and they're not going to get a variance unless they can prove some, you know, extreme hardship, that, that it's not going to exist when you have all these other uses that you could do. So it's, it's not to take away the limits on the use of R five in SU one, it's to take away the use of R five in the S one, SU one district. Fair enough?
Well, if someone were grandfathering into it, they had.
Somebody's grandfathered in, they're grandfathered in, but they're stuck with the, the.
So they would have to go back, revert back to the R five in the SU one.
They'd have to, yeah, they're, this is, yeah. The only, the only reason they're grandfathered is because they're taking advantage of the code at the time when, when they apply.
Okay.
Exactly.
So it would still go back to the R five instructions and, okay, sounds good. All right, thank you, Rick. Thank you.
But it does, but tonight, we're, we're not acting on anything, correct? It's just to advertise, then it goes to planning commission.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, no, it'll go to planning commission when.
Yeah, so it asks the, the, so the, the, you have to allow the town and the county planning commissions thirty days to review it before you can have your hearing on it. So if, if you wanted to say advertise this for hearing in, in February, right, we, we'd send it over to the planning commissions right now, and then once we hit that thirty days out from the, from the deadline, we'd make sure we get the advertising twice in there.
And our planning commission meets the third Thursday of the month, or Thursday of the month?
Or Thursday of the month, which would be the twenty-fifth.
Again, I mean, so these are for your discussion, right? I mean, you take a look, you know, this is, they're, they're not complicated, right? They're, they're simple, but, you know, they have, you know, big implications, so this is for, this is your opportunity to say, okay, well, no, go back to the drawing board, that's not what we had in mind.
Right.
Or maybe, we don't want to do this at all, I mean, it's, it's entirely up to you.
For more information, I would still, I would keep an eye on the website.
Okay.
And, and the planning commission, and I would, you know, come in, and, because I'm the liaison for the planning commission, so I'll, I'll be here as well, but it's good to be informed, and you can see, you know, what trends, and if you've got more questions, they, they're, they have open dialogue in their meetings.
Yeah, I did realize that this kind of just put the plans in most of where it gets it all going.
Yeah, so everything will be open, you know, it's an open process, so.
You won't, because it's not a zoning case or a map change, you're not going to get a notice, so it's going to be, it, the organs doesn't require that, so it's monitoring that planning commission agenda.
Okay.
And when it's on there, you know, going to the planning commission, that, like Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap just said, will be a more back and forth kind of discussion. All we're doing tonight is authorizing the beginning steps of that process to get the feedback, both the county planning commission, our planning commission, as well as the residents, and then it comes to us for the final approval.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
So nothing's happened tonight, you can have somebody look at it if you want.
Okay, great.
Make a call.
And, and the other thing I should say, so you won't get a notice mailed to you, but it will be advertised in the paper for, for two consecutive, or two times.
And it'll be on the website.
It'll be on our website.
Yeah, I, I would say, if you're not signed up to get the email when we send out the board agenda and the planning commission agenda, I would recommend that you do that.
Yeah, Mr. Fogg, anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to section eleven, eleven point one, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Russo, is there any board discussion?
Paul would have to abstain, right? Right, Paul would abstain because he was.
Doesn't have to.
Doesn't have to?
He does not have to. If he's familiar with the meeting and believes the minutes accurately reflect the meeting, he can vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section twelve, appointments to boards and commissions, twelve point one, consider accepting the following resignations, resignation of Paul Montefiore from the municipal authority, resignation of Michael Lynch from the zoning hearing board, I will note that in Michael Lynch's resignation letter, due to commitments of coaching and, and his kids, he still wanted to be involved and asked to be, as a, if the opportunity arose, to be an alternate on the zoning hearing board. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, twelve point two, planning commission, Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, can I do them both at the same time?
We're going to, we're going to run through all these together.
Okay. A one four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, Kurt Silva, an addition, one four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, Paul Evans, Presiding Hearing Board, a one five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-eight, Joe Silk, a one unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, Nick Alto-Belly, a one expired term, expiring twelve, unexpired term, expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-six, Mike Sheridan, Zoning Hearing Board Alternative, a one three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, Mike Lynch.
Municipal Authority Supervisor Robert, Supervisor Russo.
Municipal Authority, one five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-eight, Tim Kelly, one unexpired term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-five, Walt Borges.
EAC Supervisor Russo.
One three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-six, Cindy Mahalo, one unexpired term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-four, Dave Galuch.
Super Parks and Recreation Supervisor San Francisco.
One, one five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one.
Marple Town Leisure Services Supervisor Chanlis.
Oh, one three-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-six, Marty Milligan.
Girls and Greenways Committee Supervisor San Francisco.
One four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, Joe Falcon, one four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, Evan Pappas.
Shade Tree Commission Supervisor San Francisco. Oh, excuse me, Supervisor Russo.
One five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-eight, Dan Flynn.
Historic Preservation Commission Supervisor Chanlis.
A one four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, Tiffany DeMayo, one four-year term, also expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven, Donna McColl.
Finance Committee Supervisor San Francisco.
One five-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight, Lisa Pissel.
Bartram Bridge Supervisor Russo.
Two-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty-five, Eddie Johnston.
The library board, the way that the charter's set up is that they need to conduct the interviews, and then they tell us who they're going to, who they're recommending to us, so we'll have them once the library board provides it to us. Twelve point fifteen, vacancy board, one, one-year term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, John McDevitt, delegate to PSATs, Stephen Neese, representative to the Central Delaware County Authority, John Gillum, representative to the Council of Government, Steve Neese. So we've heard a motion from twelve point two to twelve point eighteen, is there a second?
Second.
All the, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, motion carries four to one. All right, section thirteen, board liaisons, thirteen point one, Supervisor Chanlis, excuse me, Police Supervisor Chanlis, non-uniform personnel Supervisor Chanlis, Police Pension Board and Non-Uniform Pension Board, Leonard Altieri.
Excuse me, one moment, who voted against?
I did.
Oh, you voted against, okay, I'm sorry.
Thirteen point three, Police Pension Board and Non-Uniform Pension Board Supervisor Altieri, Planning Commission Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, Zoning Hearing Board Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, Environmental Advisory Council Supervisor Russo, Parks and Recreation Board Supervisor San Francisco, Girls and Greenways Committee Supervisor San Francisco, Shade Tree Commission Supervisor Russo, Historic Preservation Commission Supervisor Chanlis, Municipal Authority Supervisor San Francisco, Finance Committee is Supervisor San Francisco and Supervisor Roberts-Lightcap, Bartram Bridge Joint Commission is Supervisor Russo, Leisure Services is Supervisor Chanlis, Library Supervisor Russo, School District is Supervisor Altieri, Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services is Supervisor Altieri. Mr. Sikora, I stuttered on that one, because they're board liaisons, we don't, we don't have to vote on that, right? We're disappointed? Okay, is everybody fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Township officials, and I will say, for the board liaisons, I should have noted that we did the appointments to boards and commissions, if you were following it, it was either the people who did the interviews, or it was those who are the liaisons, those boards and commissions, and the boards and commission liaisons, by and large, have not really changed in the last year. All right, section fourteen, township officials, Township Solicitor, Richard C. Sikora, Esquire, High Schwartz, Township Conflict Counsel, Raphael Pupio, Township Engineer, Panoni, Eric P. Johnson, P.E., Alternate Conflict Engineer, Charles J. Catania Engineering, Catania, sorry, Char, Carl, yeah, Charles J. Catania, Catania Engineering, Township Manager, Secretary Treasurer, Stephen M. Neese, Chief Administrative Officer of the Pension Plan Funds, Stephen M. Neese, Assistant Secretary, Suzanne R. Valanen, Assistant Treasurer, Yvonne Bullock, Rights and No Officer, Suzanne R. Valanen, Chief of Police, Christopher Lunt, Roadmaster, George Sharitz, Zoning Officer, Director of Codes, Building Code Official, Andrew Rescheck, Assistant Zoning Officer, Stephen M. Neese, Building Code Official, Assistant Zoning Officer, Commonwealth Code, Fire Marshal, Carl Keen, Assistant Fire Marshal, Richard Heffernan, Jr., Sewage Enforcement Officer, Herbert E. McCumbey, Jr., P.E., Consulting Engineers, Electrical Inspector, Commonwealth Code and United Electrical Inspectors, fourteen point one nine, Health Inspector, that position has been eliminated due to the creation of the County Health Department, fourteen point two zero, Emergency Management Coordinator, Dr. Jean Bale, fourteen point two one, Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator, Stephen M. Neese, Animal Warding, Alan Strickler, Animal Shelter, Brainy Wine Veterinary Hospital, Appointed Auditor, Malley, L.L.P. Arborist, John Rockwell Hasbach, Jr. And I guess.
If if I can, Mr. Chairman, you cannot do the auditor tonight. You'll need to do that at the meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay.
There's not enough time on the advertising.
The appointed auditor, so fourteen one two four?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Secora, do we remind me on that one? Do we vote on that? Or the, yeah, right, we have to vote on those.
Yes.
Yeah, you, okay. No, I'm just talking about all the other ones.
You need to vote on the other ones.
So I make a motion for, uh, fourteen point one to fourteen point twenty-five with the exclusion of fourteen point one nine and fourteen point two four. So what I did there, um, was all the township officials, I removed the health inspector since that position's been eliminated and since the auditor needs additional time to be advertised, that's why we pulled that. So it's everything from fourteen point one to fourteen point twenty-five, with the exception of fourteen point nineteen, the health inspector and fourteen twenty-four, the appointed auditor. Motion was made by supervise, uh, seconded by Supervisor Channellus. Is there any other board discussion? Everybody clear?
Mm-hmm.
I know that was confusing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fund Transfer, fifteen point one, consider approving the twenty twenty-three dash oh six fund transfer as follows, transferring twenty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars and thirty-six cents from the general fund to the capital fund. Pico contributions to twenty twenty-three road program. Transferring eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-one cents, any accrued interest from the twenty twenty loan proceeds to the capital fund, use of loan funds. Motion is made by Supervisor Channellus. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Uh, any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section sixteen Payments, sixteen point one, can I get a motion approving the nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-five cent escrow release payment to Jay Seiler at nineteen woman drive for completed work. Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Channellus. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Bills, section seventeen Bills, seventeen point one, can I get a motion approving the twenty twenty-three bills on check register dated January second, two thousand twenty-four totaling one hundred and fifty-six thousand, forty-eight cents?
I move.
Motion was made by Supervisor, uh, San Francisco. I almost said Partridge. I was so used to saying Partridge. Uh, uh, motion was made by Supervisor San Francisco, seconded by Supervisor Channellus, I believe. All those in favor, is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Seventeen point two, can I get a motion approving the twenty twenty-four bills on check register dated January second, two thousand twenty-four totaling twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents? Motion was made by Supervisor Channellus, seconded by Supervisor Russo. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Seventeen point three, can I get a motion approving the twenty twenty-three ratified check register totaling three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents? Motion was made by Supervisor San Francisco, seconded by Supervisor Channellus. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section eighteen Reports, eighteen point one, report from the Township Manager, Mr. Nice.
Yes, I have two things tonight. Um, I will start with the easier of the two. Um, the first thing I wanted to share with you is we got word. Um, I think it was actually late Friday, but, uh, uh, we just are starting to work through everything with the holiday. Um, Pico has informed us that they're going to be doing tree trimming work and potentially a few tree removals. Been told that all the tree removals are definitely dead trees, um, but the work will be being done on Goshen Road near the Goshen Trail area up two fifty-two and along Saint David's Road in that area. Um, what we have said to Pico is we want our arborists to have a chance to take a look before the work is done, just to make sure that there's any if there's anything that's being done that we have question about, we can respond to it. So I just wanted you to know because you won't meet before the next before they probably start their work, because we were told they were going to start in the middle of January. Um, so we'll be working on that from a staff point of view. The, the second thing that I have, um, if you recall at the budget hearing or the budget meeting, uh, on twelve, or I believe it was twelve thirteen, um, we, you had uh, gotten together and you had said this is kind of where you wanted to be. Uh, I was looking for a copy of the millage sheet. I pulled up the wrong millage sheet and told you that you had a millage of one point eight instead of one point seven seven six. Um, we you then passed the millage at one point eight eight, assuming that you had did a four percent increase and it ended up being a six point six percent increase. Um, it did fully fund the budget. That's what I think you thought you were passing that night based on that. Um, I think the issue was some of you thought that you were doing a four percent increase versus the six point six. And so I apologize to you that I pulled the wrong file, um, but I wanted to let you know that and be clear and transparent in the process.
Um, okay, um, is there any questions for the Township Manager?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to just put on the record and and I appreciate you clarifying that for us. Um, I I I think that evening, you know, for me, you know, the the budget that was advertised took us a while to get to that point in November. Um, and it was sort of a compromise in my mind trying to balance the, um, the impact and and the burden on the taxpayers versus the obvious need to fund township and services, um, trying to just, you know, we all kind of make our best estimates here, you know, not having a crystal ball. Um, looking at what we think is going to happen, the recommendations from the administration and, you know, the experiences that we've had. Um, and in my opinion, you know, I also look at the surpluses that we've had every year and 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 the reasons for those and 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 I know that they're not taken for granted at all. Uh, but I do just think, um, that if I had known at the time that it was six point six percent, because, you know, we talk naturally in percentages. We don't really talk in mills as, you know, we we look to to understand what those mills translate into in terms of percentages. Um, I I would not have voted in favor of that budget if I had known that it was a six point six percent increase. So I understand if, you know, um, if the majority, if the budget would have passed anyway, I understand not wanting to reopen it at this point to 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 vote again for nothing. Uh, but I at least want that to be reflected, you know, that that, um, I would not have voted in favor of that.
Any other comments for the Township Manager? Okay. Section nineteen New Business, nineteen point one, can I get a motion approving the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five holiday schedule?
So I move.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor San Francisco, se- seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nineteen point two, can I get a motion approving the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Board Commission Committees Meeting Schedules as well as the advertisement of the schedule?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to make one note, just because they're public watching. Um, there is a change for the Historic Commission moving from the fourth Tuesday to the second Tuesday because of scheduling conflicts. Um, just so that if somebody's used to it, I listening or attending that meeting on the fourth Tuesday, it's now on the second Tuesday.
Okay, um. Get who made that motion, who seconded it. Who was that?
Mr. Russo and, uh, Ms. Roberts, like that.
So the motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Channellus. Is there any other board discussion on nineteen point two? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nineteen point three, can I get a motion approving all third-party ski schedules?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nineteen point four, can I get a motion approving the payment of the following pension plan administrative fees to Thomas J. Anderson, as well as authorize Township Manager to sign all required paperwork? Six thousand, one hundred dollars to the non-uniform pension plan, six thousand, three hundred dollars to the uniform pension plan.
No move.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor San Francisco. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nineteen point five, can I get a motion approving the twenty twenty-three Newtown Township tax abatement credits for various fire company members that have acquired the necessary service points which total fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars and sixty-six cents?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts, like cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nineteen point six, can I get a motion approving the new stray contract with Brandywine Veterinary Hospital? The following are the associated increases for twenty twenty-four, six dollar increases monthly stays, new monthly fee will be one hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month. Two dollar increase for daily stays, new total daily fee will be forty-six dollars a day.
No move.
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts, like cap, seconded by Supervisor Channellus. Is there any board discussion? The only question.
Only a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month and it's forty-six dollars a day? Six thousand.
It says forty-six dollars.
Okay.
Am I correct?
But I tell you what, if you all approve it, we'll, if we need to change it, we'll change it at the next meeting, or if you want to. Yeah, I I was gonna say I was, I don't think it's for a stay for the first one. It 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 sounds like that. I think stays needs to come out of the first. So so it's a monthly fee that we pay every month whether there's somebody there or not, and that's a hundred and thirty-eight.
Okay.
And then it, that's what it is supposed to be.
Is the board fine with that? Okay.
They could come to your house.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nineteen point seven, consider approving the advertisement for a zoning map change of forty thirty-one and forty thirty-three West Chester Pike.
Second.
Motion made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor San Francisco. Is there any board discussion? Solicitor Secora, do you want to talk on this one, or do you want to wait until we get down to twenty-two point one? Well, we might as well take them both right now, honestly. This is nineteen point seven, correct? Your microphone off?
It is now. Some years ago, property owner around Ford, petition to rezone some property on that north side of West Chester Pike near the existing Ford dealership, uh, petition to transition the zoning, uh, map from Marshall. At that time, um, it was not applying because the property owner, patient to that was not interested in anything. Uh, so I have, it was a reverse spot zone situation where Marshall down to a certain point, and yet property at forty thirty-one residential at forty thirty-three that's being used commercially, and then B two, another commercial, uh, large tract beside that. So the forty thirty-one came in to be changed from R one to office use. Planning Commission looked at. I think that's the right thing. It should be consistent. It should all become the whole strip. So they they changed it. In the meantime, we identified the one last residential property then that's already being used commercially at Musterdees. Uh, is not rezoned. So to make it consistent and not have this spot zone situation, um, the recommendation from the planning commission was, hey, why don't you consider making both commercial units? Uh, so what this proposed, or so we had to had to kind of start over, right? Got to advertise, got to repost the property. But to do that, we got it to the Delaware County Planning Department, uh, as both being changed, right? So the maps changed, that whole area is now Marshall, Delaware County, Delaware County Planning Department recommended doing that. Um, our local planning commission had already recommended. Property's already been posted, so we just need permission from you guys to advertise it and, um, have to send out mailings. Parcels, if it's a map change. For January. Yeah, Jack, it was a very, uh.
Twenty second.
One cent.
Okay.
We'll advertise it tomorrow and.
Okay. Any questions for the solicitor?
I just want to clarify that this map change will just reflect what is there currently.
Yeah, I mean, well, yeah, I mean, one, one is being definitely, I mean, it's got a sign on it and it's a, it's a garden shop or
Right.
or something along those lines, garden center. And, uh, the other one is but yeah, I mean, it's you're not supposed to have single properties inconsistent with what's around.
Spot zoning, right. So it's not taking a residential property that is currently being used as residential, turning it into a commercial property. Okay.
I I don't know about the forty thirty-one. I don't think that's being used. That, that's, it looks like a residence.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for this listener? Any other questions from the board? Okay, so for nineteen point seven, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Then we're gonna jump, since we're here, might as well just go to twenty-two point two. Review of Proposed Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one zoning map change of forty thirty-one and forty thirty-three zoning map. Is there an actual, um, ordinance that we need to read, or is, no, okay. You want us, do you need to add anything else to that, Mr. Secora?
Yep.
That's it.
Really, those are on there so everybody would be able to see them for review.
That's that's not the right ordinance.
There's really not acts and items tonight for you, but but all twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three are really just for review in case you have questions that you wanted to ask.
Right, so meaning so for forty thirty-one or forty thirty-three West Chester Pike, all you do is approve an advertising.
And that's the motion we just did at nineteen, okay.
So there's not enough more to talk about that. That's just so people see that's that's not the actual.
Yeah.
And that's the same for twenty-two dot 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 two and twenty-two point three, it's just the advertising.
That's right.
That's what we don't.
Yeah, but the only, yeah, yeah, exactly. The only difference is, uh, for the two text, so that was a zoning map amendment that we just did, right? So we're not changing what residential means, we're not changing what commercial means. We're just saying we're flipping that map. So what used to be a residential category is now a commercial category. The next two that we're going to discuss, the map's not changing. We're gonna, the the, our C one district's gonna remain a C one district, our S U one district's gonna remain an S U one district. We're not really changing the nature of them. So sometimes if you really change the nature of a district by your text amendment, that could also be considered a map amendment.
Right.
But it's still gonna be a commercial district, it's still gonna be an S U one district. So it's not a map amendment, it's just the text. But this next two ordinance is that we've already discussed in the opening remarks when the, when the public had a comment, uh, and if you want me to move right into that, um.
Yeah, you may as well, and then we'll just, we'll do the motions afterwards.
So so the next two of these text amendments, we've already really discussed the S U one. The whole purpose of that is just it's, the S U one's a special use district, and if you look at the things, it's laboratories, or, you know, uh, labs, offices, uh, certain types of medical type offices, um, and then as an additional use, it says, oh, and everything allowed in the R five district. And if you look through our five district, it's housing for the elderly, whether it be apartments, um, townhouses or single, just any type. You know, there's a series where, you know, you gotta comply with those requirements. So this would simply just take the R five use out of the S U one district. R five still exists wherever R five exists, but it's not gonna be in the S U one district. You were to advertise this and then get, you know, feedback from the planning commission to do it at the February. Um, so that one, that one is is relatively straightforward. The other one is in your commercial district. Um, right now in in the commercial district, you have, and and this doesn't, when you when you change the zoning rules, it's for future uses that come before you. So right now, there's a series of apartments in the commercial districts over top of of different, uh, you know, commercial entities, some of which are some just, uh, residential units that just sit by themselves in an otherwise, uh, commercial area. Uh, and by passing an ordinance like this, it says, we're not just going to allow commercial uses except for very, very limited circumstances in your C one. You're not taking away what already exists. Somebody lives there, they can still live there. Uh, somebody has an apartment, they can still use as an apartment. But what you're saying is, the next person who comes in with an application, they're not going to be, they can't just come in and say, I want to build an apartment complex by special exception. I want to build a single family house. I want to build six apartments, or I want to convert office space to, uh, townhouse. It is, that's, that's what this would do. It it limits that. And so what the proposed ordinance says is, look, we recognize, might be, might be more old fashioned these days, but, um, some folks like to live. where they work. I'm a baker, I got to get up at three o'clock in the morning, I want to have an apartment over my bakery. So you can have an accessory, you know, an apartment accessory to that commercial use for the owner or an employee. So, yeah, it reduces traffic because now their commute is from upstairs to downstairs instead of getting in a car and driving somewhere. So it would allow accessory residential use, single. And then that's it. That's, that's the proposed ordinance. So if somebody came in and said, I want to build an apartment complex in a commercial district, you would say, that's not permitted. That is the end of the session.
Any questions for the solicitor? Okay, so we will break these up. So nineteen point eight, can I get a motion to consider advertising and forwarding to the Newtown Township Planning Commission?
Advertise, and, and the way our zoning code is written, you guys got to announce the date of the hearing. So so for, you know, for forty thirty-one and forty thirty-three, we're going to do that on January twenty-second. And so, just want to announce that as your advertise for January twenty-second.
So we already did that vote though, do you want me to redo that?
Well, just, you can just clarify that.
So for nineteen point seven, for the map change of forty thirty-one and forty thirty-three West Chester Pike, that will be heard on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four.
Yep. And then, these, it's really up to you, the, under the timing of these, right? For the municipality's planning code, when you, and our, and our ordinance, when you do a map amendment, you have to, I'm sorry, when you do a text amendment, you have to forward it to those planning agencies and allow them thirty days to review it. They don't have to review it, they could say, we don't want to review it, you don't have to wait for feedback, but you have to at least give them thirty days. So it's really your clock as to when you want that next hearing to be. But if we forwarded it to those planning agencies tomorrow, that thirty days would be up somewhere around February second. And so that you could, if you wanted to, list this at that next meeting, which would be February twelfth, I believe. That, that, you know, it's, you don't have to do it on February twelfth, but if you wanted to, you could. But that's what our, that's what our advertisements would be for.
It's time for our planning commission to see this, January twenty-fifth. Correct?
Yes, it does.
Because we control, well, we always want anybody to give our planning commission two weeks, three weeks. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I know the guys on the planning commission, so if I need a, I'll make sure it gets on.
No, 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 but I, but I know, that's, at being liaison, I get that too. So, but I just want to be sure that
I don't know, I don't know, you know, what the, what the calendar's schedule looks like, but we can give.
I, I think getting on the planning commission's agenda is not an issue. I think there's one other-
Sure, because we, you know, we said to the public that it would be on the planning commission.
Yeah, there's one other thing that night, I believe, at this point, so, and I don't know that anything else could be added.
Yep, so February, so this hearing date would be February twelfth?
Both.
Okay, so nineteen point eight, I know, it was, I'll just finish it, but I have who made what. So consider advertising and forwarding to Newtown Township Planning Commission and the Delaware County Planning Department for review of a text amendment ordinance to Newtown Township zoning code, leading section one seventy-two dash eighty-eight point B three, which will eliminate R five uses in the S U one district. That hearing will take place on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The motion was made by supervisor Russo, seconded by supervisor Chanless. Is there any additional comment from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Nineteen point nine, can I get a motion to consider advertising and forwarding to Newtown Township Planning Commission, the Delaware County Planning Department for review of a text amendment ordinance to add a definition, to add to a definition of accessory dwelling unit to section one seventy-two dash two, and delete the existing section one seventy-two dash seventy point O residential restrictions and replacing it with a new section seventeen point seven point O. In total, accessory dwelling units to permit by special exception, only single families, accessory dwelling units in C one districts. This hearing will also take place on February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay.
Motion was made by supervisor Russo, excuse me, supervisor Chanless, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Laykap. Is there any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section twenty, old business, there is no old business. Section twenty-one, resolutions of legislation in action. Twenty-one point one, can I get, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh one Township Manager's Compensation, supervisor Chanless.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash oh one, a resolution of the Township of Newtown and the County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania hereby states compensation of the Township Manager slash Secretary slash Treasurer. Whereas Article X one one one, Section thirteen oh one B of the Second Class Township of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania states that the compensation of Township Manager slash Secretary slash Treasurer shall be set by resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the annual compensation of Township Manager slash Secretary slash Treasurer shall be one hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars effective as of January second, two thousand twenty-four. To be paid in the same manner as other township employees unless authorized by the Board of Supervisors at its discretion. In addition, Township will contribute three thousand dollars to the Township Manager's Township Retirement Plan account. Resolve the second day of January two thousand twenty-four by the Board of Supervisors of Township of Newtown.
Motion made by supervisor Chanless, seconded by, is her second actually?
Second.
Motion made by supervisor Chanless, seconded by supervisor Roberts-Laykap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Steve, you're stuck with us for another year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-one point two, can I get a motion approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two Bank Depository Supervisor Roberts-Laykap?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two Resolution of the Township of Newtown and the County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Bank Depositories, whereas the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown, Delaware County, Pennsylvania desires to safely increase the investment potential of its money by investing from time to time in collateralized and federally insured obligations with commercial banks or savings institutions chartered by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, and it is hereby resolved by the authority of said supervisors that one. Proper officers of the Township of Newtown may execute such resolutions and documents necessary to establish and maintain federally insured and collateralized accounts with commercial banks or savings institutions chartered by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States. Two, the proper officers of the township shall be authorized to perform whatever other acts that shall be necessary under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States to establish and maintain such accounts as shall have been afford described, afford said described. Three, it is, it is the sense of the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown that the proper officials of the township shall be charged with choosing the appropriate federally insured and collateralized obligations with commercial banks or savings institutions chartered by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or the United States. And that the proper officials shall seek to obtain the highest possible return consistent with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania controlling second-class townships. Resolve the second day of January twenty twenty-four by the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown, and that is my motion.
Motion made by supervisor Roberts-Laykap, seconded by supervisor San Francisco. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twenty-one point three, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh three Bank Signature Supervisor Russo.
Whereas the Township of Newtown Board of Supervisors has resolved to use TD Bank and Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust play as depositories and desires to designate who is authorized to sign on behalf of the township. Now and therefore be resolved, financial institution named above, and any one or more of its offices or branches, be it, be, and hereby designated as a financial institution of a depository for funds of the government entity which may be withdrawn on checks, drafts, advices, debit notes, or other orders of payment of monies, including electronic orders bearing the signature or otherwise authorized to be made by any two of the following officers, employees, or agents of the government, any, or listed below. Leonard L. Theory, Board Chairman. Nina Roberts-Laykap, Supervisor. Paul D. Francesca. Supervisor Stephen M. Neese, Township Manager, Secretary, George Saras, Director of Public Works. Further resolved, the agents whose names appear above are hereby authorized to open and maintain a deposit account or accounts of the governmental entity of financial institution subject to the terms and conditions of the business deposit account agreement as it may be amended from time to time. Account agreement. Further resolved, the financial institution is hereby directed to accept and pay without further required of any item or payment order drawn against any of the governmental entity's accounts with the financial institution bearing the signature of the otherwise authorized by any such agents even though drawn or endorsed by any of the other agent signing or tendered by such an agent for cashing in the payment of the individual obligation of such agent or for deposit to the agent's personal account. Financial institution not be required or under any obligation to inquire on the circumstances of the issue or use any of these items signed or payment order authorized in accordance with the resolutions obtained herein or the application or disposition of such item or payment order where the proceeds of time indicate payment order. Further resolved that any one of the agents is authorized to endorse all checks, drafts, notes, and other items payable to or owned by the governmental entity or deposit within the financial institution or for collection or discount for the financial institution and to accept drafts and other items payable to the financial institution. Further resolved that the above-name agents are authorized and empowered to execute such other agreements, including but not limited to special depository agreements and arrangements regarding the manner, conditions, or purposes for which funds, checks, or items of governmental entity may be deposited or withdrawn and to perform such other acts as deemed reasonably necessary to carry out the provisions of these resolutions. Further resolved, that the authority hereby conferred upon the above-name agents shall be and remains in full force and effect until written notice of the relocation shall be delivered to and received by the financial institution. The location where the account of governmental entity is maintained, the financial institution has reasonable period of time to act such notice. Resolve the second day of January two thousand twenty-four regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion was made by supervisor Russo, seconded by supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twenty, twenty-one point four, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four, approving the twenty twenty-four fee schedule, supervisor San Francisco.
Whereas from time to time, the Board of Supervisors of Township Newtown, Delaware County, Pennsylvania reviews and revise various fees for services provided by township. Now therefore, in consideration of the above, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown does hereby resolve as follows. One, the Township of Newtown's comprehensive fee schedule attached to this resolution as Exhibit A is approved. Two, the Township Administration is directed to make this fee schedule available to the public and charge fees services consistent where it resolved this second day of January two thousand twenty-four.
Motion was made by supervisor San Francisco, seconded by supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just would like to bring note, just for full transparency, there were several changes in the fee schedule that I think you would want to be aware of, and so would the public.
Okay, Mr. Secor.
In, in this case, I think mostly people would think this is positive. Under the soil erosion section and impervious coverage, there was this, there was like five or six different layers, and we narrowed that down to basically three. One for anything under five hundred square foot of adjustment or impervious or soil erosion or soil disturbance, anything between five hundred and a thousand, and anything between over a thousand. And so we just kind of combined all those, whether, it, it was kind of all over the place, it was hard to understand, so we just did that. The other place where things were changed was based off of the budget that you passed. We adjusted the fees for the police officers, the public works folks and administration folks, if people are having to use those outside of normal business type of things. So I just wanted you to be aware of those fee changes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neese. Any other comments or board comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twenty-two, we've, section twenty-two, we completed. Section twenty-three, additional business, none. Section twenty-four, items for the next agenda, none. Section twenty-five, board comment, is there any board comment? The only thing I'll say, because I didn't, I wanted to get the meeting moving, is I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for another year. I look forward to working with all of you and working with the township staff and making sure Newtown Township continues to be a great place to live, work, and raise a family. So thank you all very much.
Because somebody's family's going to grow pretty soon.
Look at that, someone's family's going to grow pretty soon. So these meetings will be real quick.
Now they'll be real long.
They'll be real long, that's right. That's what I meant, yeah. They'll be real long. And I'm really hoping she's not watching this on YouTube. Love you, Franca. Section twenty-six, public comment, if there's any members of the public who have anything to say, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.